We don't have to do that anymore, or is that just an anachronism? Or does that still seem like the thing you want to do for good hygiene?
It would be good hygiene.
Okay.
Thank you.
So first order is to elect.
You got it.
Seeing that we have no chair or vice chair, we need a chair for the meeting, so go for it.
Are we in?
I nominate Commissioner Benjamin to serve as chair tonight.
And I will second that motion.
I will not object, but I think we ought to have a vote.
Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thanks for that vote, so why don't we kick it off, Bridgette?
Okay. I will start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, meeting of the Papua New Guinea Planning Commission. We have just a couple of items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel 27 and Pacific Coast TV's website. We have several people in the audience this evening, and I'm sure would like to speak. They're all welcome to speak during the public comments portions of the meeting. I'm just a review for those attendees. The Planning Commission Chair will open and allow general public comment prior to the specific items. So general public comment as well as a specific public comment during those specific items listed on this evening's agenda. During those times, if you'd like to speak, you'll be recognized by raising your virtual hand icon. And I will assist the chair in the public comment to allow each person to speak. If you are dialing in via telephone, you may push star six to mute and unmute yourself and star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Otherwise, your computer, phone, tablet, etc. will have the hand icon below. You'll be given three minutes of time for that commenter to speak, and there will be a timer that will pop up. Public comment, I don't believe there was, I haven't seen any public comment. But if there is any that have come in in the last hour or so, Scott, our planner, will let us know. And I again thank you for your patience during our remote meeting access. And I will now hand it over to our acting chair Benjamin for the official start of this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Bridgette, and I know everybody thanks you for making these remote meetings look easy, we know better. So good evening, everybody, hope you're enjoying the summer, the buckwheat is in bloom. Why don't you stand up and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
I am here.
Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
And Acting Chair Benjamin?
I'm here.
And just to note that Vice Chair Hernandez and Chair Goran are both absent this evening.
Thank you very much. So the record should note that we had a quick election, so that I'm working as the provisional chair tonight with the approval of my colleagues. The first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of the minutes of June the 14th, 2022. Colleagues, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes that you'd like to share? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve them? The records show Commissioner Reddick has, and Commissioner Reddick has moved, and Commissioner Gossett has seconded, all visual, very efficient.
Commissioner? Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
And Vice, I mean, I'm sorry, Acting Chair Benjamin?
I've been called worse, yes.
Question approved.
Thank you. So we have now arrived at that point in the meeting where we call public comment. This is when members of the public who would wish to address us on any subject except the things on our agenda tonight are free to do so. So if you want to talk about the Caltrans sign project, or you'd like to talk about the Grove House that's on our agenda, please hold off for now. But if there's anything else you'd like to talk to us about, now is the time to raise your virtual hand. Any takers, Bridgette?
No, I'm seeing none.
Going, going, gone. All right, so we will not open the public comment section since there's nobody here to talk about. In which case, we move on to our public hearing items. So colleagues, I just want to check and see if you like the order of the agenda, or if you wanted to, or staff, if you feel like this is the right order, we can certainly go with it. My sense is that the first item might be long and the second item might be short. Happy to take them in order, however, any thoughts? Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I hadn't thought about what you just pointed out, Chair Benjamin. I, if that's your judgment, I'd be very happy either way. And if the goal is to get the short one serviced first, that would make sense.
Staff, are the applicants for the second item in the room, or do they, are they going to show up around eight o'clock?
No, I believe they're in the.
Yes, they are logged in, so.
I see. Staff, any reservations about adjusting the agenda?
No.
No.
All right then. So I'd like to request a motion to reverse the order of the public hearing items, please.
I move that we reverse the order of our agenda this evening, and we will go with the coastal development permit for the street side yard setback parking exception and architectural view for the new single-family residence at 549 Grove Street. PD 20 dash 011.
So I'll second it.
So to clarify, we're reversing the order of the public hearing items so that we hear 1B now and we'll hear 1A afterwards. Is that the sense of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please, Bridgette.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Scott, a little bit of a curve ball, you ready?
Absolutely, and thank you for the nice introduction. Acting Chair Benjamin and members of the Planning Commission, nice to see everyone this evening. And community members, thanks for logging in. I'll give a brief PowerPoint presentation on the proposal at 549 Grove Street. Okay, a little background, this proposal was, or the house was approved and reviewed by the Planning Commission last April. And after the approval, a new survey was actually prepared by the consulting surveyor that was hired by the design team. And they concluded that the previous survey that was prepared was erroneous as far as lot width and lot size. Now, the new survey that shows a lot as one foot wider actually disqualified the site from utilizing our severely substandard development standards. And it was, it was very, very close before, they were just under the 55%, which is the sort of the threshold for severely substandard versus substandard. And the site is actually substandard as opposed to severely substandard. Now, the project was, you know, a few little minor revisions took place, and the house is slightly larger. And the footprint has been shifted two feet to the east. So that's, that's really the two substantive changes that have taken place compared to what was previously approved by the Planning Commission. Now with that, though, a, as Commissioner Gossett mentioned, there is a street-facing side setback and parking exception has been requested. So that predicated a completely new hearing, because before we didn't notice for the variance or the exception. So in preparation for the meeting this evening, we did post a site and published a legal notice in the newspaper that advertised the parking exception and street-facing side setback variance, as well as the coastal development permit. We also sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet. So this slide shows the previous story polls, and I've indicated just with the red line there, the two-foot shift in footprint. Just as a reminder, this is an aerial shot of the site. It's on the corner of Grove and Cabrillo Highway. It includes several individual parcels which will need to be merged before we issue the building permit. And the design team, they're already working on the documents for the lot merger. Here is the new site plan. Now, along with the building footprint shift, the driveway and driveway apron also had to get shifted slightly to the east. And the new site plan here reflects that. I also drew in some red lines here that show the buildable footprint per the required setbacks for substandard development standards. And one of the big differences is with substandard, there's a 15-foot street-facing side setback as opposed to a 10-foot. So you can really see that with this red line, that there's, it cuts off a fairly major portion of the site, given the narrowness of the property. Here's the new survey, I thought that was, might be appropriate just to show everyone that a new survey has been done. And then the other change that I mentioned earlier, the increase in square footage. And this, this is just on the second story. So the floor plan on the left shows the, the old design that was previously approved by the Planning Commission. The floor plan on the right shows the new second story. And you'll notice that sort of in the back there, that the rear has been bumped out a little bit for a larger master bedroom and sort of reconfiguring the, the walk-in closet space. So just a little more space, since they have more lot size, they're still not exceeding the maximum allowed floor area. Front elevation remains the same, unnoticedable with the differences from the front. This is the street-facing side facing Cabrillo Highway, this is the old design. And then here's the new design, I'm trying to indicate the new space that's been added. And then similarly, this is facing west. And then the added space there. The rear elevation, very subtle change, the, the room space is just bumping out onto the standing seam metal that was approved previously, the roof there. You'll see it's a very subtle change. Now, a few things for the Planning Commission to consider, you know, our land use plan and zoning, as well as residential design guidelines and CEQA. The key thing on this review, you know, as I mentioned earlier, is the street-facing side variance and parking exception. And I'll touch upon that a little bit. Now, as I mentioned earlier, the minimum street-facing side yard setback on substandard lots is 15 feet. The new residence approaches into that required 15 feet by six feet, so reducing the setback down to nine feet. And now the interior side yard, what used to be a three-foot side yard setback minimum for severely substandard, is actually a five-foot street-facing side setback for, for substandard. Now, the applicant opted to shift the footprint to the east, resulting in the need for the only one variance. And, you know, we spent quite a bit of time, you know, sort of running through all the options with our, with the design team on how to minimize variances and, you know, what, what makes sense for the site. And we also sort of discussed some of the discussions that the Planning Commission had in the, the hearing back in April. And, you know, it was mentioned that the less sensitive side of the property with respect to setbacks was definitely the east side. And that maintaining a five-foot might be better for the neighbor, so we've sort of wrapped that into the findings. But the critical thing is that the, the findings can be made for the setback variance because of the narrowness of the lot and the irregular shape. That's a special circumstance applicable to this property and, you know, not necessarily all properties within our Lita Park neighborhood. So, you know, we can reasonably, you know, recommend that the Planning Commission make the findings for the variance based off of the unique circumstances. And just as a side note, there's also a, you know, a substantial distance between the, this sort of the edge of Cabrillo Highway and the side property line, roughly 60 feet. Now similarly, with the parking exception, severely substandard only requires one garage space and then an uncovered space outside of the front yard setback. Substandard actually requires a, one, an additional covered space. So they've asked for a parking exception to eliminate that option of needing to provide the, the one additional covered space. And similarly, we feel that, you know, the findings can be made for the parking exception, given that, you know, there, there really isn't a whole lot of difference between this and the previous approval. As far as design and, you know, impact to the neighborhood, and there is that unique circumstance with this property. The project is still exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that's about all I have, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also, you know, the, the architect and owner are logged in this evening. They're available to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Colleagues, do you have any clarifying questions?
I, I just have one question through the chair.
Yes, of course, Commissioner Gossett.
Remind me, is the land due east of this property post-land? Is it owned by Peninsula Space Open Trust, or is it city land?
It's actually Caltrans Rightofway, directly east of this property.
Directly east of this property?
Yes, it's Caltrans Rightofway.
Okay, okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
I didn't remember that, I forgot.
Yeah, for, you know, maybe if that would provide them flexibility for, you know, improvements in the future, so having the actual land, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddick, any questions? Clarifying questions?
No, Chair Benjamin, thank you.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. So if you're here to speak on this, this project, now is the time to let Bridgette know so you can be recognized that we can hear your thoughts.
I'm seeing no one.
Seeing no one, all right, very good. Going, going, gone. I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back down to my colleagues. What are your thoughts about the proposal, Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I, I'd like to compliment staff and the applicant for working through the challenges that were thrown at them with the new survey. And I think as is articulated in the staff report, and as Scott has just explained to us, that staff is using good judgment, being sensitive to the challenges that exist with this sort of uniquely narrow and, and irregularly shaped lot, a substandard lot. And I, I think that the, the side variance and the parking exemption make an awful lot of sense in this case, and I'm prepared to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gossett, any thoughts here?
And yes, I could echo what Commissioner Reddick just said, and I appreciate again the staff working so hard with the applicant to find a solution for this lot. And I also like how they shifted the property away from the house to the west to, you know, achieve that five-yard setback, to make it a little, you know, to provide that extra space between the two homes. So I think there's some positives there, so I also support the project.
All right. The only other thought, I agree with you, I'll say that this is one of those curse of the monkey's paw moments where it probably looked like a good idea to see an extra foot of ownership. And it probably led to more difficulty for the applicant than they originally anticipated. And, you know, that's sort of the tax code equivalent of finding out that you're in a higher bracket and suddenly having to pay not just a higher rate, but a higher absolute amount of tax, which doesn't happen in the tax code. But it's happened here for this applicant. And it's probably something that we ought to look at to figure out how we do a graceful transition from the severely substandard to the substandard. I realize that, the good news is that I think we're almost out of these lots that are fronting the highway, I hope so. As any of you who have followed my comments on these applications know, I have reservations about the noise. That hasn't changed, but I also think that the design is a nice design. Stevie Wonder once said about a Paul McCartney song from the 70s, that was a good song then, it's still a good song now. And I feel that way about a good house design. The fact that the context of the lot has changed the rules that we consider, hasn't changed the goodness of the design. And I think the change that they're proposing to expand slightly is not egregious, I think it's fine. I do worry about the noise for those future households, but I think they're going to have to be caveat emptor and be conscious of what the sound profiles require. You know, they'll be looking at a house next to a highway, and as long as it's too lane, it's probably going to be reasonable, but they ought to know. Otherwise, I have no, no great concerns about this project. If no one else has any comments, I entertain a motion. Commissioner Reddick?
I move we approve the resolution at hand.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Gossett, moved and seconded that we approve the resolution next in hand. Could we have a roll call, please, Bridgette?
Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Motion approved, Fraser.
Thank you very much, Bridgette, and thank you, staff, for working a nice audible on this project, well done, Scott. All right, we now turn our attention to public hearing item 1A, the CDP and Architectural Review for a new variable message sign and associated improvements within the Caltrans Rightofway. And I believe this is going to be presented by Scott?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good.
Chair Benjamin.
Take it away, Scott.
Thank you for the nice introduction. And similar to the last one, I'll give a brief PowerPoint presentation, and the design team for Caltrans is also logged in this evening, so. All right, so as mentioned, this is the. All right, so, uh, as mentioned, this is, uh, the proposal includes a, uh, the main part of the proposal is a new variable message sign, otherwise known as VMS for short. And, uh, let's see here. So this proposal is, uh, just, just to start, for starters, it's, it's part of a, uh, larger project that spans between Daly City in the north and Half Moon Bay in the south. And the improvements that's, um, that are under review by the planning commission this evening only include uh, the, the proposed changes within city limits. So it's a little bit confusing that this is a sort of one piece of many parts of one project. Uh, but within city limits, uh, the improvements include one new VMS sign, one new VMS that would be 12 feet wide and five feet tall, uh, as shown in this, uh, photo simulation here. And it would be mounted to two wooden posts. Also, the guardrail, uh, shown here would be replaced and upgraded. And then, uh, several eucalyptus trees and sort of hang over the, the highway right now would be trimmed back to provide a better view of the new sign. In addition, uh, three new Monterey Cypress trees will be planted, uh, in the back of the sign. And they're actually shown in this, uh, photo simulation here, this sort of the darker, um, foliage in the back of the sign. Those, those do not exist currently. Those will be planted as part of this project. Now, a little background, uh, our city council, uh, received, uh, two, two updates from Caltrans on two separate occasions, um, back in October and November of 2020. And our city council, uh, part of the, the feedback that gave Caltrans was that, uh, the new sign design would need to be reviewed by our architectural advisory committee. And that the, uh, VMS location that was previously proposed, uh, adjacent to the car dealership further north was, really wasn't a good fit, that it, it made more sense to push the location of the sign further south, um, right around, uh, city limits. And, um, after receiving that feedback, Caltrans, uh, you know, they evaluated that and that's, and that's when they came up with this location. Uh, Caltrans, uh, they're actually the lead agency for the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, since it's their project, they're, they're a state agency. The city of Half Moon Bay is considered a responsible agency, uh, since Caltrans does need a coastal development permit from, from us. Now, um, Caltrans did prepare an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, uh, that evaluated potential impacts from, uh, this project as a whole. And the city and coastal commission, uh, provided, uh, comments on the ISMND. Afterwards, on, uh, May 10th, 2021, Caltrans adopted the initial, the ISMND. Now, as I mentioned, uh, you know, coastal development permit and architectural review are needed for this new sign. And, uh, Caltrans submitted an application to the city on January 25th of this year. Uh, this slide shows the, uh, the new VMS sign turned off. So I thought that might be a good perspective for the commission and the members of the community to see that, um, you know, there is a difference between on and off and the sign, uh, let's see. I'll go, uh, the sign most of the time would be off. It would just be used, uh, during emergency purposes or unique events to, uh, provide motorists with, um, you know, information. Now, once the application was submitted, uh, the city circulated the biological assessment and the follow-up memorandum, uh, that included, you know, information on the new location for our 45-day comment period, uh, which is standard for when a coastal development permit is processed. We didn't receive any comments when we sent the, uh, the biological report out. Shortly after the close of that 45-day period, we scheduled this review for our architectural advisory committee. That took place last April. And the AAC did have some, you know, minor suggestions and, uh, on a few things to evaluate and look at. One of them being adding a, a Monterey Cypress tree in the back of the, uh, the sign. And, um, Caltrans responded and, you know, uh, did add the tree. Actually, they added three trees. Then they also provided a response to comments explaining, you know, sort of the justification for the size of the sign that they've come up with. Now, for the hearing this, this evening, uh, we did post the site. Uh, and then we also, uh, published a legal notice in the newspaper and then sent out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet. No comments have been received. Now, this slide shows the site and, uh, sort of aerial photograph. The, uh, the light blue shows where the new guard rail, guardrail would be replaced. And then the, the VMS would be installed roughly in the middle of the guardrail. And now the project's located just south of the, the intersection of Miramone's Point Road and Cabrillo Highway on the east side of the highway. And keep in mind that this is, uh, this is considered a visual resource corridor, the, the town boulevard, uh, as indicated in our new land use plan. Now, just for some perspective, this is a, um, a section of the new sign, uh, sort of in plan view. And then elevation showing the, the height of the new sign, uh, from the roadway would be approximately, uh, 12 feet or a little, little under 13 feet high. And then, uh, the landscape plan, and this was prepared after receiving comments from the AAC. And, uh, it shows the, the new VMS in red as well as the guardrail that would be replaced and the three new Monterey Cypress trees in black. Now, a few key things for the, the commission to consider, uh, there, there is some sensitive habitat in the area and this, this could be considered dispersal habitat. Um, you know, mitigation measures were included with the adopted ISMND, uh, that are applicable to even this new site. And Caltrans has provided documentation that, uh, the previously adopted mitigation measures uh, would mitigate any potential impact to, uh, sensitive species within the area, even on this new location. As I mentioned earlier, the site is within a visual resource area. And that was part of the reason why, you know, our, our city council and, and staff, we, um, asked that the project get reviewed by the AAC. And, uh, a couple of things, AAC asked for Caltrans to look into reduction in size, sign, sign, sign size as well as, uh, um, adding the Monterey Cypress trees in the back of the VMS. And the idea behind that is that part of it was that Monterey Cypress are a little bit darker in color. And the backdrop of, uh, to the sign, uh, would result in reduced visibility, uh, when the sign wasn't on. And it sounds like it's, you know, a lot of times a sign won't even be in use. It's just more for emergency purposes. And, uh, we were happy to see three trees as opposed to one. Now, a little bit more on SEQA, uh, I kind of touched upon this earlier, but the, um, let's see, there was a Caltrans memorandum and, uh, secret, SEQA revalidation form that was, uh, attached to the initial study in your packet and, um, identifying the new location of the VMS, uh, that no additional impacts would result from the new location. And, um, you know, that's, uh, there, there was some concern. We had some discussions with Caltrans on, you know, did it make sense to recirculate the initial study? But since the impacts would be the same, uh, you know, we, we concluded that it was, um, you know, didn't make sense, but, um, you know, that's, that's something for the commission to consider as well. And that's all I had. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, the design team from Caltrans is also available for, to answer any questions or provide clarification in the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, so colleagues, um, I, I should ask if you want to hear anything from the applicant or if you have any clarifying questions based on what you've heard tonight, uh, in Scott's report. And, uh, then we can go onto the public hearing and, uh, consider it. Commissioner Riddick, now I can see you. Thank you.
Uh, Scott, just to clarify, um, w- we did receive a public comment this afternoon. I believe that you may not be aware of it because it, it may have been emailed directly to the five planning commissioners from a, from a Half Moon Bay resident.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I would be happy to look at that. I, I was not, I did not receive any com- emails or letters or phone calls. Let's see.
Oh, I can forward it to you real quickly.
Thank you. At some point, we, I need to read that as well. I'm not aware of it. So thank you for mentioning it.
Well, let me get into that mail system and if I have any more facts to share, I'll do that in a moment, but I had no other clarifying questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gossett, any clarifying questions from you today?
I, I do have a, a couple clarifying questions. Um, well, I know, Scott, uh, thank you so much for doing a fine job of, uh, presenting this tonight. And I really appreciate that you sent the, uh, deck out a couple of weeks ago when we had that Tuesday night off because it gave me a lot of time to go back and look at all the meetings that Caltrans had, um, you know, shown the other towns about what was going on with the project and, and along with the Caltrans, uh, presentation to Half Moon Bay. And Caltrans did a really nice job of explaining the project to the point where by the time I was done listening to all the discussions, I really didn't have any more, too many technical questions. But I guess the one question I do have and, um, is that even though this proposal is in Half Moon Bay only, and that's what our finding is and that we would consider tonight, um, have you considered the positions of like the other, uh, towns? Because, you know, we, we're a coast side and, you know, so I, I guess this is something I sort of struggled with when I was reading the entire deck was that, um, you know, we have neighbors next door that might feel differently and they do feel differently. And, um, and then Pacifica took action already. So I guess I, I understand that maybe Winter can explain to me a little bit about, you know, uh, or Jill or Scott, um, how we deal with that. Are, are we, uh, operating in a vacuum or do we consider the coast side as a whole when we make decisions? Especially, uh, with scenic highway one.
Maybe I'll start out and then, uh, Jill and Winter can, can follow up afterwards. I, you know, the, the key thing that the commission's reviewing is the coastal development permit that's been submitted and the scope of work that's included with that.
Okay.
And, and then also the, uh, you know, considering the, uh, the environmental document that's been adopted and is that sufficient for, um, evaluating and disclosing and mitigating any potential impacts that could result from the, the work that's included with the application that was submitted here in Half Moon Bay? So I, I don't know if that helps.
Sort of. I'd like to suggest a couple of other things. Sorry, no record, um, to be consideration. Uh, the SEQA document that was prepared, um, takes into account all of the various installations regardless of where they are um, located, um, jurisdictions. We do note, um, and I think this is really that title of lines, uh, but the coastal commission made comments on that SEQA document. And, um, I think, I think that's in just context for, for you. Um, they are, of course, the standard of review in each particular jurisdiction is the certified local coastal program. Um, and all, all of the various jurisdictions, these programs are supposed to be completely compliant with the coastal act. Um, so you do have the coastal commission making comments, um, on the, uh, sign as these signs as impacting, uh, visual resource corridor. Uh, your staff, um, kind of getting into deliberation, um, possibly.
Well, I didn't mean for that.
No, and it's not your fault. I'm, I'm, I'm going there. So I'm going to stop myself and
Yeah.
suggest, um, maybe that we finish with clarifying questions and give the applicant a chance to.
And I did have more clarifying questions. I mean, and maybe I shouldn't have, um, well, anyway, we'll move on to my second question and maybe it's too soon to ask because everyone, um, maybe has not had a chance to read the email that came through today. So I don't think it's really fair for me to ask a question about, um, what was, what came through the email that, uh, hasn't been presented to the public. So I, 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 again, I guess I need sort of guidance on that.
Uh, why don't we hold that one off? Give staff a chance to read it first so they'll be in a better position to.
Okay.
There'll certainly be a time to hear that.
Okay.
It, but if there are any other questions that are purely understanding the project rather than what its impact might be.
No, uh, I'm done.
Okay, great. Um, Winter, did you want to add anything to what was already said or do you want to hold off?
Um, I think Jill and Scott covered it. Um, I, you know, my impression is that this, um, VMS is, uh, has what we might call in the environmental law world, independent utility. So I'm not sure that if the city approves this, that would impact any other jurisdictions and their decisions on whether to issue necessary approvals there. So I think this is a pretty focused decision, uh, in terms of Half Moon Bay as opposed to, um, you know, what, what other jurisdictions around are doing.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I, I had some questions, but I think I'm going to pocket them for now. Um, I, I want to better understand the use cases. And it could be that that will come up in presentation if the applicant is planning to present, maybe I'll learn more and won't, won't need to press in too much to better understand that. Um, if there are no other clarifying questions, I'd like to open the public hearing then. Uh, so it's open and I'd like to invite the applicant, if they would like to speak on this item, to be our, our first speaker. Uh, surely we'll give them a bit of extra time. It's a complicated project. Um, but I'm interested in, in their thoughts and then looking forward to hearing from the rest of the public. So Bridget, why don't you give the floor to the applicant if they'd like?
Okay. I know there's several from Caltrans on here, so if one wants to raise their hand, it'll help me to, okay. Nandini, all right, I'm going to let you in just one moment. This is Nandini. I think they just came over, so I think you can, um.
We, I saw the hand?
Yeah, I think that they can, um, unmute and they gets, they're able to speak.
Thank you. Welcome.
There she is.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I wasn't sure whether I'd be, uh, whether you'd be able to hear me or see me, but here I am. Um, I, uh, we actually, Scott did such a great job of presenting the project. We weren't planning to repeat that. Uh, we intended answering questions from, uh, the commissioners, uh, all of you. Um, so I, I'd like to get my team in. Is that possible so that they can speak up as well? Or, or would the commissioners still like us to go through, uh, a presentation of the project?
We're happy to pose specific questions as we go along, I think. But we didn't want to deprive you of the opportunity to speak. If you're content with Scott's presentation, we'll come back and, uh, see clarifications where we, where we like them. We just.
Well, we were trying to, um, transfer or send, uh, the city, uh, a set of PowerPoint slides that we could have used. But at this point, um, I'm not able to share the PowerPoint slide unless one of my team members can do that. Uh, but essentially I, I can, and I can talk without the slides. This project, uh, uh, came about because, uh, the, this 20-mile stretch of highway one uh, is deficient in that we don't have a messaging system to address incidents on the, on the highway, on this two-lane highway. So, um, the. So the southern limits was around at Miramonte Point Avenue, Miramonte Street? Or is it Miramonte Point Avenue?
I heard.
Road, sorry. And the northern limit is Clarinata Avenue undercrossing near Daly City. So along this 20-mile stretch, what we are proposing is about five VMS signs and six, what we call microwave vehicle detection systems, which is a small device that's mounted on poles and streetlights. So the intent, the need arose from the deficiency that we didn't have any messaging system. And then that's how we developed the purpose for this project, which is to be able to provide travel time information and emergency notification to motorists. But as we develop, that was the initial scope of the project. And as we developed this project, we heard the public, we listened to the residents, and the focus became more on emergency use only. So the signs will not be on all the time. We will only use them in the event of an emergency, like a weather-related emergency or an accident or any kind of traffic backup. So that's the purpose of this project. And it's intended to be informative in the sense, inform the motorists and address, you know, emergencies as well as incident management, road weather management, and performance monitoring. So I have my colleague, Ong Mong, who can, if you let him in, he might be able to explain the technology behind this. So that said, you know, we have one VMS sign that we are proposing in Half Moon Bay. And the signs are essentially five by 12, you know, on two wooden posts. We've tried to make them as aesthetically pleasing as feasible. And it's like I said, it's not going to be on all the time. It's going to be on only during emergencies. And it's intended to be dark sky friendly. So given that there are limitations to what we can do on this two-lane highway, widening is not a possibility. It's a highly sensitive coastal zone and a visual resource corridor, so a scenic corridor. So we are limited in our ability to manage incidents on the two-lane highway. So this is one way of informing motorists so that they can, they have the ability to make decisions. And the signs are placed strategically. And so, you know, this is what we believe is the optimal solution for this two-lane highway at this point. So.
All right, well, let me suggest that we, I think we've all read the project proposal. We're familiar with the dimensions and the location. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot and ask for, you know, that level of review. If we have some questions, we can come back and ask you if there's any particular aspect that wouldn't have been clear from the reading, of course, we're happy to hear from you on that.
Thank you. I hope I gave you a gist of what we, why we did what we did.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, I'd like to ask for you and your colleagues to stand by as questions come up after we've heard from the public. We'll do our best to capture them.
May I, before we, before you ask us questions, could we let a few more members of our team in? I can read out the names.
Bridget, how do you want to play that?
I can, if that's what, if that's what your.
Because we have a team of engineers and planners who are able to answer different types of, you know, questions that might come up.
So thank you. What I'd like to suggest is that we bring them in when we get to the questioning period. We'll have them on hand.
All right.
But we give, let's give the public a chance to weigh in and not tax our Zoom line too much for now. But we won't, we won't hide them. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gossett, I saw your hand wave.
Yes, I had one more question that I forgot to ask. When I read the deck, it talked about the wireless detection systems at the 92 and 1. Has that been removed from the project? That's what I wanted to ask Scott.
Scott, I believe the answer is no.
No, they're still included in the project. I think maybe I neglected to mention that during describing the, you know, during the description. And, you know, they are very minor in nature. That's something that would, you know, that's very common to just be added to existing facilities. So.
Let me, maybe I'm being rusty as a chair, but since we're in the public comment time or, you know, the public hearing, I want to be sure to step back and encourage my colleagues to join me in stepping back. And here, we've heard from the applicant, let's hear from the public. And of course, we have the discretion to bat last for this meeting. So hold those thoughts as they come along and we'll, we won't miss a single one of them. Okay? Bridget?
Yeah, I will look over and see who we have. I'm going to go ahead and move Nandini back over and then we can move you back if we need to.
Thank you for your comments, Nandini, if I'm not being too familiar.
Okay, so I am seeing, as of right now, no one raising their hand to speak.
Well, it's a pretty substantial project, but let's give them a minute to see if anything's come in. Maybe while, while they're contemplating any comments they might wish to provide. By now, I think we've had a chance to read the comment from Hazel, I believe it is. So I want to, perhaps there's a way to summarize that so that it, since it's, might not be in the packet that went out, maybe there's an appropriate way to memorialize it as part of the public record. Staff, what do you suggest?
We'd appreciate that. We've read it for the first time tonight. We think the comments should be to the record since you've all received them.
I heard little bits and pieces of you. Am I the only one who is having trouble hearing you?
It just cut out for a second, but you're fine. Yeah.
Try again, please, Jill.
Oh, okay. Staff agrees with the chair to please read that into the record. All commissioners receive the communication. I wish staff had received it. We're appreciating having it forwarded to us now. Winter is also reading it. Thank you.
So read it into the record. That's the direction. All right, Bridget, will you do the honors since you have the coolest connection going?
Yes, I believe it just, my email just dinged. So let me see. I think I might have just received it.
And if you didn't, we'll be happy to read it into the record.
No, I think I can. Yeah, I just got it. Just give me one moment. Okay. Let me see here. Okay. So this came from Hazel Jonas. Dear LSA's Chair Gorn and Commissioners, this came in, it's on the record, Tuesday, July 12, 2022, at 7:42 PM to Chair Riddick, is what I can.
Actually.
I'm sorry, 12:54 PM. And it came to the planning commissioners and not to staff, according to the email that we have here. And it came in today, the 12. Dear, let's see, Chair Gorn and Commissioners, I'm appealing to you to regret, reject, sorry, the city staff recommendation for approval of the coastal development permit allowing the installation of a new variable sign, sign within the coastal, within the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, right away. Number one, the staff report does not provide specific details on how the project benefits the citizens of Half Moon Bay. How effective would the VMS placement at the proposed location provide emergency or road closure information for Half Moon Bay residents exiting their neighborhoods during a tsunami, earthquake, or fire? How would this sign help emergency traffic circulation in our Half Moon Bay neighborhoods? Or two, Caltrans has only considered a no project alternative. Adopting a negative declaration suggests that the city agrees that Caltrans has no other project alternatives and that all other alternative emergency notification technologies are not suitable. The negative declaration did not take in consideration evaluation of any other types of alternative methods. Number three, the project favors travelers but not Half Moon Bay residents. Did Caltrans consider equity, I'm sorry, liquidity and community impacts as required by Caltrans' liquidity statement? Post-December 10, 2020, see attached page. There is a PDF attached. And four, according to comments presented by the San Mateo County, Highway One is a scenic corridor. The sign would deteriorate the scenic aspect along Highway One. Please consider rejecting city staff recommendation to issue a coastal development permit. Thank you, Hazel Jonas, city resident in El Cezarain.
Thank you, Bridget, for letting us have that in the record. While we've been reading that, has anyone come forward to speak on this side?
We just have the Caltrans representative, Ayung, and I'm going to talk her down the names. Let me, let me bring her. I don't know if you want me to bring her in or not. So you directly.
What's the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to have another speaker from Caltrans at this time? Or do you want to close the public hearing and respond to Caltrans, invite them to respond to questions? Commissioner Riddick?
I think it's more in keeping with our practice to invite the applicant to respond as questions come up rather than more preliminary presentation.
Very good. So without objection, I'll close the public hearing for now and keep Caltrans on hold as sort of an extension of our staff to better understand our response. That is my understanding of what you're recommending. Is that right? Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. And we'll bring it back to the commissioners. I'll pocket my concerns. So you two have the floor. Have at it.
Well, I'll.
Go forward, Commissioner.
I'll lead off if Commissioner Gossett is content with that. I found the Caltrans application to be a challenging one for me. And I worked hard to be disciplined in my analysis of this and to confine my examination of it to the narrow role that I believe we on the planning commission have here, rather than, excuse me, rather than, give me one.
Of course.
I apologize for that. Yeah, so I was, I was trying to say, excuse me again. Apologies. I was trying to examine the issue at hand from a clear and narrow. I'm sorry, maybe I, maybe I should take a break to clear my throat and I'll come back in a moment.
Of course, Commissioner Riddick, we're appreciative you're deeply emotionally involved in this project. Commissioner Gossett?
Okay, yes, so I was challenged by the report. But I also appreciated, you know, the effort that went into the report. And the thing that struck me the most, and I did read the entire deck, was, were the two letters from the California Coastal Commission. And they basically, I mean, in a nutshell, the letters are in the packet, so I don't need to repeat everything that they said. But they were, in general, I thought, opposed to the VMS signs due to the fact that it would, you know, mar the scenic attributes of Highway One. And so for that reason, I didn't know if, you know, our finding is limited just to what's in Half Moon Bay only or if we should consider the sentiment of California Coastal Commission. And the other thing I'm concerned about is if, you know, would we, you know, how can I say it, anger them if we, you know, adopt this and they see it as something that is not, you know, in keeping with Highway One? And I think they did say in their, in their letters that they were worried about the precedent that these signs would send for the scenic attributes of Highway One. So, and that is an environmental feature. I consider the scenic attributes of Highway One part of the environment. So that was something that I was challenged with. Those two letters stood out to me. So I think with that, I, and then I did have some questions about the equity analysis, if it had been done, and that's a question for Caltrans. If equity analyses had been done. And, you know, we have a bilingual community. So, you know, it made me think, well, should some of those signs be illuminated in a second language for those that are bilingual? I don't know what the standard is on that. So I, I'm just asking that in general. So, and yes, that is it. Thank you.
So I'd like to try to see if I could gently reframe part of your question. I mean, you know, the Coastal Commission bats last in the administrative process. Their comment letter is just another comment letter at this stage of the game. And we should, you know, it's input. We should think about it. If they don't like a decision that we make and someone appeals it to them or they get an appeal, they'll have a chance to bring their point of view. But I'd encourage us, regardless of whether you like or don't like the project, to just focus on your reactions based on all the comments you've got. And don't worry whether you make somebody mad or not. That's okay. Commissioner Riddick, how are you doing there?
I'm doing much better.
Look at you.
I picked a bad timing to get a frog in my throat. I apologize. It can't have been very entertaining for anyone watching. But yes, what I, what I set out to say is that I too read all of this proposal and the comments associated with it. And it's very easy to get distracted by the fact that the Half Moon Bay slice of this, it's just a small slice of a very big project. And there are a lot of, a lot of pretty strong reactions to, to other parts of this big project. Well, I tried to limit my study of this to, to our job as a planning commission in dealing with the specific Caltrans application for this coastal development process and how it's permit and how it fits with our land use plan. And as, as we all know, in Chapter Nine of the current LUP, there's many articulate and, and articulate policies to protect our scenic and visual resources. To the best of my scrutiny of these things, it's very much about protecting, when we say scenic and visual resources, protecting the viewsapes towards the beach and the eastern hills and perhaps other parts of the agricultural fields and such. But, but none of these policies, the way I read it, would, you know, preclude things on a micro level like, like the sign that we're, we're dealing with. In, in, I visited this site this morning and I was impressed by the fact that, of all this stretch of Highway One that we're familiar with, this, it would be hard, you'd be hard pressed to find one where there's less impact on any kind of a view than the site where Caltrans proposes to put this VMS. It's in a, you can see a little bit in the photo, the simulation that Scott showed. It's, it's in a low place in Highway One that dips down as it approaches Miramonte Point Road. It's fairly heavily wooded immediately to the east. You don't see the hills from there. And this, the sign with the, with the, with the effort to fit that into that setting and make the changes, or at least the one change that the AAC recommended by planting cypress trees behind it, that sign would not, for northbound motorists, just. That sign would not, for northbound motorists, just as far as I could tell, would not block anything, uh, meaningful. And I also noticed that in, in chapter nine, we do, we do have policies that, that take heed of public safety uh, issues and the importance of, of, uh, using good judgment and flexibility when it comes to public safety issues. Like, yeah, but a lot of the, um, some of the public comment that swirled around on this has to do with people's, some people's opinions that the VMS are in declining usefulness in this modern era of everyone having a cellphone. I, I think again that it's not my job as a Half Moon Bay Planning Commissioner to make a judgment about the usefulness of them. Except I will say that it doesn't, it doesn't take much imagination to imagine a scenario where the tunnels or, or Highway ninety-two are closed. And, and certainly that would be a useful thing to be able to advise northbound motorists on, on Highway one, you know. Every day I, I hear complaints about the traffic on the coast side, and this obviously is not going to solve that, but a- any, any small step, even if small, I think is, is worthy of, uh, of, of careful study and, and so, uh, I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but I I did agonize over this for quite a while. I came to the conclusion that this does make sense and I'm prepared to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddick. Um, I'd like to, uh, check in on a couple of questions, um, uh, with the applicant or staff, so I'll let, I'll let staff make the call as to who should answer. But, um, you know, when I originally heard the presentation, I was, I actually listened to the presentation when this went to the city council many months ago. And one of the challenges for me was the relationship between the location of the sign relative to our network of roads, and I don't mean the city of Half Moon Bays. I mean the county network of roads. And the actionability of the advice that could be received. You know, how, so you find out that there's bad traffic ahead, or that there's a fire, or a landslide, or a tsunami. I don't know. I don't know what. But presumably, uh, as someone, it, somewhere in the presentation, there was an amusing picture of a road sign that had lit up in reader board, you are stuck in traffic. Um, and, uh, we don't need a sign for that, right? We're, the purpose of the sign is to give us actionable information. And if we were, uh, northbound on Highway one, say, going, uh, towards Half Moon Bay, uh, and we're already at Highway ninety-two, we really don't have a lot of options. The fact that there's a traffic jam in Half Moon Bay, or that Highway ninety-two is locked up. You know, your options are really, uh, rather limited. If you knew that information before Tunedus Creek or Skyline, uh, sorry, Tunedus Creek or Highway eighty-four, um, you might have a chance if you're on the coast, you might have an alternate route option. And I noticed that one of the reasons that, uh, uh, that created value in the eyes of the applicant for the sign was that this was going to provide some useful information. And I think in passing the example that, uh, Commissioner Riddick just mentioned, maybe you're coming up Highway one and you find out that the Lantos Tunnel is closed, gives you a chance to make a decision to use Highway ninety-two. So I think that's a, that's a good illustration of some of the value. Um, it seems like you could get more value if you could get it back where people had more alternatives. Um, but, uh, I'm interested, uh, in following one of the, uh, the points of comment in the letter was trying to understand alternatives, why this looked like the best possible placement from the point of view of what could be built. Um, and whether, uh, a location, uh, that provided more alternatives for traffic to adjust um, might be more feasible. Um, so is that a question you'd like me to direct to the applicant staff, or do you want to weigh in on that?
I think we should defer to the applicant. Um, they have their hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I don't get to see the hands right now, so Bridget, I'm relying on you to show me the hands.
All right, I'll bring them in.
Thank you.
The applicant commissioners, um, my name is uh, good evening, uh, commissioners. Uh, my name is Almon. I'm the District Division Chief of System Management, uh, Traffic Operations District for Bay Area. Uh, Commissioner Rodog and Commissioner Benjamin, thank you for your note and observation about how these, uh, signs, which we critically place before the decision point will make a huge impact. Uh, Caltrans in, in intent is not to populate, uh, the scenic for our Highway one with the signs and the, uh, electronics. We are very conscious about keeping Highway one, seeing it as it is. And our strategy is to gain efficiency, to manage demand and to improve safety on the corridor without, you know, widening the freeway. Uh, so the strategy is to place the, uh, commu- mean of communications, uh, to co- uh, to communicate to the drivers, uh, on road safely without using the cellphone or the handheld devices, display the, uh, road condition, uh, efficiently. So, um, while we kind of go through the scoping process, we only identify to place the signs which are before the decision points. Like Commissioners noted, the sign is placed on the northbound approximately three miles south of the ninety-two, which gave the users, uh, for the alternate, uh, routes if there is a closure uh, or the emergency in the, uh, tunnel, uh, north of ninety-two, now between, uh, Half Moon Bay and Pacific, Pacific. And also, um, you know, managing the demand during the, uh, emergency incident, uh, 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 times is, it reduces the secondary crashes, right? Um, you know, if we have an incident and the slowdown, we can say, hey, you know, slow, slow traffic ahead. So it will give our users advance, uh, notification to slow down changing road condition ahead to reduce the, uh, secondary incidents. So, uh, I kind of want to make the point that, um, our intent is not to, you know, install a sign every, uh, everywhere. We're going to be very selective about where we place them. And, uh, considering all the context, uh, uh, sensitive, uh, uh, issues and what our local communities want. And, um, the detection, uh, I believe we have on common about the detection devices. The detection devices that we, uh, plan to install at two locations, as Scott pointed out, they are very, um, very small, and it could be mounted in the pool. The advantage of having the, uh, real-time monitoring is that we can keep a track of the uh, speed vol- uh, in, in addition to the volume for the future planning purposes, we can track, uh, the speed of the vehicles through that area. So if there are incidents or accidents, we can have all the detection, take appropriate actions to, uh, to address that.
Let me pause. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, sure. Uh, let me pause there, and if there are any follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Um, there were some questions in the letter that, uh, uh, Bridget read. I, let me see if I can pose the first one for you and get your, your feedback on it. Um, it says the, uh, it's asking for the project benefits to the citizens of Half Moon Bay. How effective would the VMS placement at the proposed location provide emergency or road closure information for Half Moon Bay residents exiting their neighborhoods during a tsunami, earthquake, or fire? How would this sign help emergency traffic circulation in our neighborhoods?
Yes, so, uh, the, uh, the good example I can think of is, you know, if the residents coming home uh, uh, from, uh, you know, so, uh, from the, uh, south going northbound direction. Let's say if there is a, uh, uh, incident, accident closure at the, uh, uh, ninety-two, Highway one, uh, in the, uh, intersection or the intersection above that, uh, we can activate the sign walking with the city. Um, so that, that will provide, um, means of, uh, getting the communic- uh, information to the, uh, the users. Including the residents coming home. So, um, one other thing I'd like to point out is that, um, as Nandini and Scott mentioned, we're not going to use the sign all the time. There will be only, only emergency, certain cases that we will use it. But we will be working with the, uh, city team. You know, if, you know, they, they can advise us, hey, you know, these are the, uh, scenarios, uh, that we would like to with Caltrans to help activate the sign. Um, then we can go through the, uh, different scenarios and such. And also, um, I'd like to answer one question about the, um, uh, language other than the English displaying on the signs. Uh, Caltrans and the CHB, there is a, uh, government, uh, governing, um, um, body which, uh, working with the MUTs, basically, uh, MUTCD, uh, identifying which language, uh, what type of sign can be displayed on the, you know, CMSs and VCM, uh, VMSs. So currently only English is the, uh, language, uh, message are just allowed to display on the signs. Plus, that is something that we can kind of explore through the government.
I see. So if I, if I understood the answer, it benefits the neighborhood to the extent that the neighborhood traffic is part of a larger, it's a cohort within larger traffic that's already on the road. But i- if you're in the neighborhood already, n- n- not a lot of impact, if I understand correctly.
Yes, uh, so yes, from the highway, uh, travel perspective, yes.
Okay, um, and let's see, from a point of view of, uh, placement, again, I'm reading, I'm reading between the lines and the questions, but just so I can understand them better. Um, have thought been given to, you know, if some alternative routing is good, is more alternative routing better? So that, for example, if this information were available, uh, before one reaches the traffic jam, the area that's, that's where this sign is proposed during every morning and every afternoon and most summer days, especially weekends, it's already jammed up there. It's not going to be news to people reading the sign that they're in a jam. If they had the information, uh, south of, uh, Tunedus Creek Road or Pescadero Road, they might have other options. Um, as the letter points out, there's, the other alternatives were not considered very much beyond the, the original proposal of location two, which was removed from the application. Can you give me, uh, and my colleagues some insight into whether other locations further south were advising northbound traffic, uh, was considered, and if so, why it was rejected?
Yes, so, uh, the, uh, the primary, um, goal of having the VMS of, of ninety-two, uh, uh, Highway one is, uh, the, the decision point of, uh, uh, you, uh, users motorists be able to divert it to ninety-two if the, uh, there is a closure north of ninety-two, uh, Half Moon Bay and, uh, Pacific. So that is the primary, uh, goal. Uh, while we, uh, choose the, uh, while we identify in the site placement, we, uh, identify the location which are not too far away from the decision point, meaning uh, we don't want to place the sign ta- ten miles south of, uh, ninety-two if, if the main diversion, uh, alternate route is ninety-two. So we want to kind of place closure to ninety-two to stop as extensive as possible.
I see. Um, and then there's a, uh, a broader comment about equity that I'll just reread and ask for your thoughts about. The project favors travelers, this was an opinion of, of the writer. The project favors travelers but not Half Moon Bay residents. Did Caltrans consider equity in the community impacts as required by Caltrans equity statement dated December tenth, twenty twenty?
So, um, the, uh, the, as far as the, uh, question about the equity analysis and what, uh, equity, um, criteria that we look at, uh, I, I will get back with the team and provide the response to Chris, uh, Scott. Um, it's from the signage perspective, uh, installing those, uh, advanced notification sign help with the, um, safety of the roadway users, which not only the regular users, but also the pedestrian traffics and, uh, all use of bikes, right? So that's one point of equity, uh, that we can consider off on the traffic operations side. But, um, our overall analysis, I'll get back with the rest of the Caltrans team.
It would be interesting, so maybe, maybe there'll be some additional comments on that tonight. Another, another question that I read in some of the public comment on the other, some of the other signs that seemed like they could be applicable to this one, had to do with the effectiveness of the sign in emergencies being related to, uh, the reliability of communications and power at the sign. Could you tell us a little bit about, um, the approach to reliability? Uh, if it requires, let's say cellular communication or microwave communication? Uh, you know, is that going to work in a seventy mile an hour wind or a driving windstorm or rainstorm? Or, uh, in a, a smoke field?
So, uh, as far as the, uh, reliability for the communication, the available, um, means of communication that we have at that location is mostly cellular. Uh, but, uh, while we're gonna, while we design it, while we design it, we will make sure that if the cellular coverage is not reliable, uh, we will add a redundancy uh, for the communication because we understand that the sign needs to be functional. Uh, you know, in, in weather cases, so we will consider the redundancy.
Yeah, or just sometimes our power system or, sorry, our communication system fail, right? Every cosider knows what it's like to have lost Comcast, um, or to have lost, uh, cellular coverage. I see it frequently at my home, so, um, understanding that this is, I'm not suggesting that's your technology, but um, you know, there wasn't a lot in the application to help us understand reliability.
Yes, and, uh, oh, we can also consider, uh, bu- uh, battery backup on powering the sign. Uh, you know, if we lose the communication, we will have a backup plan on Caltrans staff going out to the field, turn on the sign, turn on the message, program the message, appropriate message. And, um, uh, we also use the, uh, AT&amp;T FirstNet Communications so which is a li- uh, communication network, the, uh, first responder, uh, uses. So it's a little more reliable than the typical cellular network. Um, and one other thing I'd like to add about the, um, you know, uh, benefits for the residents is, you know, these signs that we install are also for the communities, right? Uh, as I mentioned, there is a, you know, the Caltrans of the policy, CHB, and CHB and Caltrans need the policy, what messages that we can play, uh, display on the sign. But we will be working with the city if there are any messages that we can play that meet up guidelines, uh, uh, allowed to display on the sign, we will do that. So the sign that we install is just, um, not for the traffic, um, safety improvement, um, uh, trouble, uh, timely installation, but also is some, um, asset to the community.
I see. Um, okay, well, let me, let me, uh, get out of the way and give my colleagues a chance to weigh in before I, I, uh, pose more questions. Um, uh, Steve, it sounded like you had your piece. Um, Commissioner Gossett, did you have thoughts, or Steve, did you want to go some more?
I, I was just intrigued by, um, our speaker's, uh, last comment about additional messaging that might be of benefit to city residents. I'm, I'm imagining this, this might have to do with, uh, I don't know, pumpkin festival and, and associated traffic news coming up around that, so it, it's kind of intriguing.
Yeah, for my part, I, you know, we see the temporary signs that go up that tell us about Pumpkin Festival or fireworks are illegal. I'm trying to figure out what the distinguishing messages are for an emergency system, recognizing that there's value in a sign like this being dark, except when it's got something really important to say. So I'm, it's not that I'm, can't imagine that there is utility there, but I struggle with knowing what it is that wouldn't, where a well-planned temporary sign wouldn't suffice. A different question. In the picture where the cypress, the cypress are being planted, there was some other vegetation, and I confess I did not go to the site and look. But those are royal willows that are sort of, you know, sort of a dammed up wetland. Is that what the adjacent plants are or are they other kinds of trees, Scott?
So I just screen shared the images you're referencing. And no, I don't believe they are a royal willow. The times I've gone out there, I've seen, you know, more invasives than anything else. Some hemlock, some other, you know, non-native plants mostly, so.
I see. So I assume that we have conditions. If this were going to get approved, there would be conditions that require those cypress trees that are designed, as I understand it, to buffer a visual impact, that they be maintained in perpetuity or at least for the lack of the project, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, the landscape plan actually includes irrigation for the new cypress trees as well, you know, just a small irrigated area, so. So that'll certainly help in the longevity of the cypress trees, so.
Thank you. And that kind of gets us to the visual impact question. I appreciated Commissioner Ruddick's comment earlier about the various categories of policies and the kinds of things that are specifically identified as visual resources. My sense is that the policy that identifies the zone two hundred feet wide, I think it is on either side of Highway one, as a scenic resource area, is actually independent of those visual resources. And maybe I'm, to quote a famous ex-president, misremembering that. But so maybe my question is to staff. Looking at the policy that treats Highway one and an area that are adjacent to it as a scenic visual resource, is it, does it specifically coach us to think of it as a resource because of the hills beyond or the ocean beyond? My sense of it is that it's a resource in its own right.
Yes, Commissioner Benjamin, I believe you're, you're correct that it's, you know, per the town boulevard policies that it is independent.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be sure I wasn't, I hadn't been thinking way off on this. So the, so I understand the use case. It seems like the predominant use case is traffic response to some kind of natural emergency. I confess I am struggling to understand the use case in the event of, I guess, if an overturned big rig on Highway ninety-two closed Highway ninety-two, that's not a natural emergency. And so I guess the question is, are there? So that's a use case associated with a traffic jam. And I get how that works looking at the signs on Highway ninety-two eastbound from the bay up towards, you know, going west, where Highway ninety-two is a four-lane highway traveling at sixty-five miles an hour. I'm trying to grasp how we reconcile that model of the balance of information and impact with the Highway one as a scenic two-lane road with these visual resource impacts. To me, there, it's not obvious to me that they're the same or that we should cast them the same. But the applicant has concluded that there is something going on there that should cast it that way. And I'd like to have a better understanding of that, of your perspective on this, Mr. Moong.
Yes, we, our goal is not to put the same density of signs as we will do it on ninety-two. On Highway one, since it's context sensitive, scenic ground, we will install VMS sign instead of the CMS sign pool or has signs that you've seen on the freeway.
Thank you.
That's the type of smaller footprint. It blends well with the environment, landscape background. And we just put one right before the decision of the best alternate route. So we kind of limit the number of signs. But at the same time, it at least gives us the ability to manage the traffic road condition that you kind of mentioned, yes.
The, the writer who sent in that message also included a message disappeared from my screen, but it was asking about whether other alternative to, between this or the no project alternative had come up in the deliberations. I'm imagining that they're thinking of things like tens or, you know, other kinds of emergency management. Were there other alternatives that you considered? I can actually quote the question now I've got it. Caltrans has only considered a no project alternative. Adopting the NECD suggests the city agrees that Caltrans has no other project alternatives and that all other alternative emergency notification technologies are not suitable. So let me cut the question there and ask if you have taken into consideration other types of methods of achieving the project goals.
Sure, I can clarify that. For this project, we say bill or no bill. Is this is capital, the funding we got is for the capital improvement, like installing signs. You know, the other actions that district always take is coordinating with the local PDs, first responder, in case of emergency, how we're going to communicate each other? How are we going to communicate to the public via the Caltrans website? Trouble notification information from five-on-one. So those are the ongoing actions that Caltrans is taking as far as managing the emergency, setting up the framework for the communication, setting up the communication plan. Those are not part of capital projects. So that's why maybe it's confusing for people because we kind of, while we say no or no bill, bill alternative is just specific to the capital improvement funded projects. So the answer to your question is yes, as far as the communication notification, we, Caltrans have the communication plan with our local partners and the first responder. But one thing I will note though is having the physical asset, not having the physical asset kind of limits what we can do.
So if I were going to cast this in sequoia terms, the project is defined as building signs. And the alternative to building signs is not building signs. That's, that's the pool of money that we can spend, so.
Yeah, the.
Please.
Yes, the, the funding approval that we got for the project is the capital improvement, which is the sign installation and vehicle traffic monitoring station establishment. So physical improvement is, that's correct.
Okay, I think that my questions, I feel like I have a better understanding of my questions. Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Winter, please speak up. I apologize, I didn't see your hand until just now.
No, that's okay, I just raised it. Thank you through the acting chair. I just wanted to make one point of clarification on the SEQA issue. When a lead agency determines that a project won't have any significant and unavoidable impacts, that's when it can do a negative declaration. And under SEQA, there's no requirement to do an alternatives analysis when you're doing a NECD. So I just wanted to clarify that the fact that you're doing a negative declaration doesn't mean you've concluded anything about alternatives. It just means that the project itself doesn't have significant unavoidable impacts. And as a result, there's no need under SEQA to do an alternatives analysis. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, through the chair, I did want to throw one more little bit on that.
Absolutely.
The city is, you, the commission is considering the negative declaration. The city isn't, we haven't prepared it, et cetera. So I just wanted to be clear because the communication that you received today, I think, kind of suggests that you're adopting the negative declaration and the commission's not being asked to do that.
Understood. Thank you. So I feel like I have answers to my questions. Are there any other questions that commissioners would like to ask before we move on to consideration? Commissioner Gossett, this is your time.
Just a very quick question. So I just want to make sure I understood correctly. When the power goes out, the signs will still work, is that what you said?
Yes, we do have a design option to have batteries, but it depends on what message we play, how long we play it, it lasts for so many hours. And while we design it, that's how many batteries, what would be the footprint that, you know, fit in the cabinet? So yes, there is a design option that we can include backup battery to have the sign function when the power score up for time being, yes.
Okay. And then can you talk about maintenance of the signs?
So Caltrans Maintenance Forces will maintain the sign. Those signs, they don't require a lot of maintenance on a regular basis. If, you know, it's an LED panel, if the panel goes, it has more durable panels nowadays. So we don't see a lot of maintenance activities needed because of the sign. Typical schedule, I'm sorry. Maintenance schedule, Caltrans have this, like, we kind of go out and service it two, two times a year.
Okay, and can you talk about the brightness of the LED bulbs? Are they really bright or are you able to dim them?
Yes, we will control the brightness of the LED, yes.
Okay, I have no more questions, thank you.
Just piggybacking onto Commissioner Gossett's observation about power supply. Could you remind me whether there was any engine associated with generators associated with these signs? I believe the answer is no, but I want to be sure I know.
Yes, we don't intend to put a generator for the sign. It will be just the battery backup. And that's a good point, commissioners, because we, you know, if you remember last few years ago, we had the PSPS events. Ninety-two highway one intersection is one of the assets that got power shut off. So having those batteries is very, very critical at those times like that. But, you know, we don't have a plan to bridge them.
Okay, so there's not a noise impact issue associated with energy production? That's valuable, thank you. All right, colleagues. Do you want to, so Commissioner Ruddick, you didn't swallow your lead. I think I know where you stand on this. Have you got any new thoughts here?
No, except not new thoughts, but I'll just reiterate that I, I did struggle with it and I, it's something that we should take easily, that take seriously the impact of the, of such a thing on the, on the scenic qualities of Highway one. But I, I continue to think that because of the care that has been taken to select this, this spot and the addition of the cypress trees around it, the fact that it'll be turned off for a very large majority of the time, that, that I can support that.
I understand, thank you. Commissioner Gossett, it's showtime.
Okay, I, I think differently. I don't see that this ISMND justifies meeting the objective of a safety-oriented traffic management plan. And I, I think there are other ways we could do that without marring the scenic view of Highway one. And I, I looked at the LCP and I could list the various chapters. LCP nine-one, and protecting the scenic and visual resource. I thought cutting of the limbs to allow for the signs conflicted with that policy. The visual message sign is not visually compatible with the character of the rural setting. And then I also looked at the zoning code on eighteen point three seven point zero three zero B dot three. And I thought that the VMS sign was not compatible with mature trees based on that zoning. So I'm sorry, I don't support it.
I understand. Commissioner Ruddick.
I would, I would, in response to Commissioner Gossett's comments, I think a very literal reading of the policies that you just mentioned, nine-one and perhaps nine-fourteen, could, could lead me to a similar conclusion. I, I'm, I moved, of course, by the fact that we're asked as, as commissioners to use good judgment in considering projects that touch upon the public safety of Half Moon Bay. And, and that's why I, that's why I ended up where I did.
And I respect that, Commissioner Ruddick. But the sign is located at the southern end of town. I mean, it will benefit people that are traveling through, but in terms of Half Moon Bay, I mean, what portion of the residents live south of Miramonte's Road? You know, I think there might be better locations for the sign to help us in an evacuation. Static signs, you know, disasters have no boundaries. And when we had the CZU fire, communication was shut down all over the coast side. And people were moving animals using ham radios. And, you know, movable signs are probably helpful in that kind of situation. So in terms of, you know, providing a public safety feature for our town, you know, movable signs might be a lot more flexible because, you know, disasters have no boundaries. So I just don't support a visual message sign that is static and a location that doesn't benefit the entire town. And I just don't see it meeting the objective of being a safety-oriented traffic management plan. So, thank you, sorry.
So, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Ruddick.
Well, I don't, if you want to go ahead, Chair Benjamin, feel free.
Yeah, I am, I'm torn. I appreciate both of the points of view that I've heard from you this evening. And I know the questions I've been poking at suggest some concerns as well. Let me just think about this procedurally for a minute. We're not the project proponents here. So we don't get to decide what the project objective is. One of the reasons I pressed on Mr. Moong to understand the objectives was to, so that I wouldn't feel like I was making, was telling him what his project was. And I, I think that to some extent, our dialogue, and I'm not, this is not specifically to Commissioner Gossett's comment. I think that it, you know, it implies that we're, that we are telling him what his project is a little bit. I think that it, you know, it implies that we're, that we are telling him what his project is a little bit more than we should, in my opinion. This is a, a limited scope project to put up a sign that tells us about traffic conditions ahead for the people who are driving by or riding by or walking by the sign. And there are a lot of people in the city who are not that. And there are a lot of travelers who are not that. And frankly, that's, to me, that's a big criticism. That's one of the reasons I don't particularly like the project. But my job is not to like or dislike the project. My job is to consider the project that's in front of us. I think that you raised, Commissioner Gossett, has identified some important policies in our zoning ordinance and in our visual resource chapter of the LCP that calls out the limits that we should be applying to development within that resource. And so I would quibble equally with Commissioner Reddick, I think, with, with as much respect as I have for both of you. That this is not an impactless, an impactless sign. I think the Cypress trees can mute the impact when they get to maturity, which is going to be some years down the road. I, I know you saw what I did. And there is a nevertheless, a sort of a threshold of impact that is a little bit jarring. I feel like the potential for the sign to be used to tell us that there's going to be a traffic jam in Half Moon Bay is not persuasive to me. This location already carries that kind of information. It is, I think, the application of, you know, a problem in the tunnel or an overturned big rig on Highway ninety-two is more feasible. On the other hand, traffic jams on Highway ninety-two are daily, especially predictable during the summer, during certain hours. You don't need to overturn big rig to get there. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not knocked out with utility for those purposes. And so I'm, I find myself left with, the utility for the, for the intended application of conveying information is really very limited from my perspective. It has the benefit that we get to erect a sign and we get to put in WDSs to monitor traffic conditions at other locations. And I worry about the potential of privacy at some point in the future. We are not collecting personally identifiable information. We are one software code change from being able to do that once the physical material is in place. That's beyond our purview to regulate, but it does concern me as a, as a citizen in light of what I have seen in the past, well, recent years. So I do have some, some reservations about this project. And I think we've explored them enough that proponents or opponents who are aggrieved at whatever decision we might make tonight, who have participated in writing or during the oral hearing, could appeal that decision to the city council. As far as I can tell, the only members of the public who have spoken on this item seem to have raised some concerns about it. There may have been a written communication in support. So I, I think we've, I think we've beaten the items as, about as well as we can. I wonder if staff has any additional thoughts before we consider to calling the question. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. And Winter and I may need to discuss a little bit more, but we need to remind the commission that you are running just with a quorum tonight. It's three of you by. To approve a project, you would need all three of you to vote in support of that. And we're not seeing that right now. So we may suggest that you consider a continuance and the event that you need to come back with findings for denial, which our staff is happy to work on that for you. Or if you want to continue and direct us to bring any additional information, that's another thing we could do. And anything else that comes to mind in your deliberation that was not available to you, we want to make sure that you always have everything you need. Winter, if there's more that you want to make sure the commission knows, feel free.
No, I'll just add that if you feel like you have directions for the denial findings, it sounded like Commissioner Gossett had some particular policies in mind that would be helpful for us in preparing them as well.
So I understand that we need, we need the quorum of three to approve the project. Do you need a quorum of three to direct for findings for denial or is too sufficient for that?
Well, if we don't have three yes votes, that is a denial. So, and since we would like to have denial findings, I think, you know, two would be sufficient to prepare denial findings. We would need findings to support the denial either way.
It sounds like one would be sufficient in this case. So Steve, it sounds to me like we need to move in that direction.
Are you, is the prospect of a continuance to be considered by the full commission have any appeal to you?
Oh, I see what you did with appeal there. So I mean, we can ask, what we can do is ask for findings, for staff to prepare findings for denial. But if we meet on bank and the rest of the commission thinks we're moving in the wrong direction and we should get, and three votes come out in favor, then we certainly do not need to act on the findings for denial to make a decision. It feels like it's the procedural way forward that regardless of what we do at a subsequent meeting, we have them in place so that we're able to move. I wanted to take the time to communicate that because I understand your ambivalence about that. Okay, in that case, I'd like to get a motion, please. More specifically, a motion to continue the project to a date uncertain or to staff before a day certain?
I haven't had a chance to coordinate with our applicant. I'm not sure the commission.
Do you want to take a few minutes to get it?
We would really like a five minute break.
All right, without objection, let's take a five minute break. We will reconvene at nine oh three.
We're not live now, are we?
We are live.
We are live.
We're live, okay.
Yeah, through the chair, Steph's trying to reach out to the applicant and we've not been able to coordinate. So we really don't know. Oh, you have now. Okay.
Yeah, actually just heard back and it's, it sounds like August ninth would work best for Caltrans team.
A very full agenda. We have
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah, we have the Hyatt EIR and another project. So I think we need to
Did you need a bit more time then?
I think
We'll just hang out.
I think all we can do now is just offer the next office date and see if that works to them.
So that would be the twenty-third. Mr. Mung, how does August twenty-third sound to you?
Yeah, it works for us. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody else over there that you need to check with, Jill?
No, I think that will work for the city attorney and for staff. And we're sorry for the delay. We thought we were having some communication.
Happy to spend more time. We were having a forum. We were enjoying ourselves.
We would prefer, it is, we believe in the public interest to continue to a date certain whenever we can because folks who are invested in it are participating and we want to make sure that they see and want.
Very good. So I'm hearing, just to sort of bring us back to where we were, I'm hearing August the twenty-third for a continuation with staff to bring back findings for denial. If I heard Commissioner Gossett's concerns associated with the town boulevard quality, the small town quality of Half Moon Bay, policy nine-one, I think that's the one that calls out Highway One as a scenic resource. Were there other concerns that you wanted to address? I don't know, you've mentioned alternative technologies.
Well, I, I mean, are you talking to me, Jimmy?
I am, Commissioner Gossett.
Oh, yeah. Definitely. I, I just, in my, after reading the deck, I didn't think that the ISMND justified their goal of being a safety oriented traffic management plan. And I probably shouldn't have spoke about using other technologies, but that, I just didn't see how that, how they met that objective with the sign at that location.
Okay, so we need to
At that location. And then I did list other LCP policies, LCP nine-one, nine-two, nine-twelve, and then a zoning code, eighteen point three seven point zero three zero B dot, dot, three.
See, I'm not the only person that does that. So if I can reframe that as a motion for you to continue and with direction to staff to find, to make findings for denial based on the policies and zoning section and project objectives that you described, is that your motion? With that being to a date certain being August twenty-third? Commissioner Gossett?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I was making the motion.
Well, I can't. I'm in the chair.
Oh, you can't. Okay, okay. Yes, you stated it. Do you want me to restate it that?
If staff got it and you agree with it, I think it's okay.
Okay.
I see heads nodding at staff and acknowledging Commissioner Reddick that it may not be the direction you're working for here. Are you seconding that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Understood. All right, let's call the question, please.
Sorry, it's muted. Okay, so Commissioner Reddick?
With all due respect to my colleagues, I vote no.
Commissioner Gossett?
No.
And Commissioner Benjamin, acting Chair Benjamin?
I'm going to just repeat the, so the motion
Continuance, right? Is that?
Correct. This is a motion for continuance. A no vote on this motion says that you do not want the project to be continued to August twenty-third. So I'm just going to check. I don't want to put votes in anybody's mouth here. But my sense was that at least one of you wanted to continue the meeting and bring back those findings for denial.
No comment.
I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote yes.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If, I don't, I hope I'm not being too irregular, but I, as you know, I'm not in favor of seeking grounds for denial. But if it's the difference between this being continued or not, I'll, I'll support that.
Thank you. I want to be sure, I want to be sure, Commissioner Gossett, that you understand what a no vote meant in this, on this, this motion. Did you mean to do something different or is that what you want?
No, that's what I meant.
Okay. Before, while we're in the middle of a vote, so Commissioner Reddick and I voted yes, you voted no, we finished the vote. Now, before we close out the business, we might want to reconsider once I understand what it is you would like to have.
I would like to have us vote on the resolution that was presented by staff.
I am, personally, I'm not prepared to do that because I don't think we have a basis of findings to make a no decision. And I don't think there is a three member quorum to support the decision that it's existing for. That is why I would not be able to support a vote. That is why I would not be able to support a vote on the resolution itself.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're dispatched with this item awkwardly. Jill, you had to look like there was something we needed to know.
Just for the record, we ought to, we ought to communicate the results of the vote.
Thank you, we're still typing away here and want to catch up on that. Is it okay if I read in how staff captured this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Voted on the following action, to continue the item to a date certain of August twenty third, twenty twenty two, directing staff to bring back findings for denial, including acknowledgement of specific land use plan policies, emphasizing that Highway one is a scenic resource, the need to consider alternate technologies, that the ISMND does not justify the goal of meeting the objective of a safety management plan. Specific policies to cite include land use plan policies nine one, nine two, nine twelve, and there were also the zoning code citations from the visual resource standards.
Right, I think one of the, was one of the cited ones the town boulevard policy, was that in the list? Was that the nine twelve? Yeah, one step ahead of me. But I think that captured them all and Commissioner.
Staff may find additional findings. We, we will have to review our resolution that we already prepared and we understand your, your decision.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ruddick is quite right in that we have not yet reported out the vote, which was Commissioner Ruddick and I voting yes, Commissioner Gossett voting no on the resolution.
We understand that Commissioner Gossett, I think, voted in the record that she was seeking to make a vote on the resolution that was presented to you tonight. But we don't have a motion or a second on the floor for that action.
Anything else on this? All right, Mr. Mung, thank you for seeing us tonight. I know that's not exactly what you were looking for tonight, but I hope it was at least illuminating. And we'll see you again on the twenty third, I guess.
May I ask a clarification, clarifying question?
It, it is unusual in our meetings, we don't, we don't generally do that. I'd encourage you to follow up with staff. They're very familiar with the way we have, I think we've done a good job of explicating what we're thinking and they will be able to give you the advice that you're looking for. I'm very confident, so thank you for being so understanding.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, we're ready to move on to the next section of our meeting tonight, which is the director's report. So Jill?
Thank you.
Back on track here.
Your next meeting is July twenty sixth. We are tentative and we will confirm by the end of the week. The new housing coordinator, Michael Moche, and I are working on the housing element. And if we are prepared to do so, we will give you an updated study session, which we think will be to your benefit when, when the full element comes through for you. If we're not ready, we'll let you know. We are very busy right now. In fact, we're so busy because we are launching the Hyatt EIR by the end of this week. It will start circulating. So as soon as the online version is posted, we will send the commission a link to that. We also have hard copies, a few of them printed, so if you would prefer a hard copy, let Bridget know and we'll arrange to get back to you. The circulation period is a minimum of forty five days. We've extended it to be sixty days. It will run well into September. Your hearing on the draft EIR is set for August ninth. Also see that we will have a mural project before you. I think we already talked about that in last meeting. We're still sorting out what's going to be on our next architectural advisory committee meeting. I believe it's scheduled for July twenty eighth, but it's not fully formed up. City Council next week will be receiving a presentation on the five 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 Kelly Avenue proposal that has been received for affordable housing on that site. And we're looking forward to being there direction on that particular item. And the coastal commission has updated staff on the short terminal ordinance. They intend to bring it forward at their August meeting. We have them on, and made fully aware of what the recommendation is going to be, understanding their staff report will become a public document on their website a little bit later in July. And we wanted to talk again a little bit about training. We know Commissioner Gossett's interested in a training program and Bridget was going to present on this a little bit because we're prepared to assign folks up who would like to do this.
Yeah, so if, if anyone's interested, I know Commissioner Gossett reached out to me recently and I believe it's October San Jose one. So if anyone is interested here, just let me know. Send me an email so we can get the forms filled out and paid for.
Thank you, thank you very much for that one. We all value training with things, so we'll, we'll have to have a look.
Get back in the swing of things, so, yeah.
Any questions to the community development director? I had one, Jill. In the last couple of weeks, we lost a good sized piece of bluff off of Poplar and I wondered if there was any city action associated with that envisioned? Or whether it's all coastal commission at this point, it's all downhill?
I don't have an update on it yet. We are of course aware of it and the city engineer has taken a look. We've also, I believe our public works inspector made sure that it was safe. Folks were, we didn't want people to get too close to the edge. Maybe at your next meeting you can have an update. I think there's a point a bit to learn about that. And we want to thank Commissioner Ruddick, who sent the photographs in. I think quite soon that's going to happen, but I think it was very fresh.
Yeah, no puns about the air of moving there, that was a big one, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions for Jill, then we move on to the planning commissioners' communication. Colleagues, do you have any communications that you want to air here? Seeing shaking heads, me neither. So with that, and thanks to the public for paying attention, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. The record will show Commissioner Ruddick moved to adjourn. Commissioner Gossett is showing the second. I agree. I guess we should have a vote, even though it sounds like we just did.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Benjamin?
Thank you. Yes, that would be a yes. So thanks, everybody, for putting up with my rusty chairing. And we will see you at the next meeting, everybody.
Thanks for your good leadership tonight, Jimmy.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.